Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this April 30th, Special Meeting of the Zion City Council to Order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here.
Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have Pastor John Capos will be providing some prayer. Pastor Capos is with Jesus' name.
Apostolic Church.
Apostolic Church.
I'm here.
Absolutely.
As a lifelong resident and having a lot of parishioners in Zion, of course, I want to see the best for Zion. And I'm honored that you would ask me to invoke the Spirit of the Lord in this meeting. Can we bow our heads? Our Heavenly Father, we come to you as humble as we know how. We look for your infinite wisdom to give us the answers that we search for in these turbulent times. We acknowledge that you are in control of everything, that you set up and you take down governments. We believe that you have already put the right pieces in place for you knew what we were about to face. Teach us to value and respect each other because you said, "When the righteous govern, the people rejoice." You also said in your word that a house divided cannot stand. Teach us the value of teamwork. Teach us that we are body, soul, and spirit. And you have noted some for the body and some for the soul and some for the spirit. As Solomon asked for wisdom to lead your people and that we realize we've been given the privilege of guiding your people, we ask that you would give us the wisdom to make the right decisions. We know that these are difficult times and we know that it's going to take more than what we have. As King Solomon said, "We don't always have the answers. If we had them, we would have already used them." We ask that you would give to each of our leaders the wisdom and the knowledge, the health and the strength to be able to stand firm in this day and this hour and to always remember they are representing souls, they are representing people. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Capos. Item number four, Agenda Changes.
Have one change.
Okay.
We can move closed session to number 11 and insert departmental commentary for number 10 and then move the subsequent one down. Is anybody getting a motion to amend that?
Move.
All right. Clerk.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item number five, Citizen Comments.
Is there anyone on the signed sheet?
No, no.
There's nobody?
There's no one.
Okay. Nobody signed it?
No citizen comments. Item number six, Consider Agenda.
Approval of minutes of a special meeting held on April 14th, 2020 at 3:30 PM. Approval but not released of closed session minutes of a meeting held on April 14th, 2020 at 3:53 PM.
I'll move to approve.
Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Bills, vouchers, 1 through 4, 887 through 134, 950, drawn on Huntington National Bank. Total $319,583.94.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item number seven, Consider Passing Resolutions as follows. Item 7A, Authorizing the Execution of Website Maintenance Agreement between the City of Zion and GoFlow.com per Administrator Naples.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. First of all, I appreciate your patience in us calling this meeting. We had a lot of things that were time-sensitive due to us being at the end of the year, this being one of them. We have a maintenance contract, website maintenance contract with GoFlow in the amount of $1,998.33 per month, which is currently set to expire April 30th today. This renews it for another year. It's at the same dollar amount that it's actually been for quite a few years. And he handles all of the website maintenance as well as behind the scenes. He's helped us with website redesign, online bill payment setup, all that stuff. So I would recommend that we approve the contract as presented.
Is there a motion to authorize the execution of a website maintenance agreement between the City of Zion and GoFlow.com?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Just one question. Have we put this out to bid or have we had any other offer to do this maintenance?
We looked probably, two or three years ago, we looked at quotes and we found that the rate, based on the hours that were put in, were comparable. It probably, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to, to do that going forward. Probably, you know, some of our contracted services, we look at every three to five years. I could put that on for the, for the list for next year.
Okay.
Probably time to do that.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item 7B, Amending the Personnel Authorization per Administrator Naples.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. At the last council meeting, we approved an MOU with FIRE that changed some of the schedules and actually the shift makeup. In doing that, we need to adjust our personnel authorization accordingly. At this time, we also had all of the departments go through and make sure that there were corrections for things that might have been out of date or that haven't happened. So a lot of this was through restructuring internally, positions that were old or dated that we weren't utilizing, things of that nature. So you can see the changes are marked in the authorization in front of you. I recommend approval of the authorization as presented. This is just our authorization to hire up to that amount. It doesn't mean that we will based on budget needs and what our operations are. So just keep that in mind, but I recommend approval as presented.
Is there a motion to approve the amended personnel authorization?
I'll move.
Second. Discussion?
I have a question. Has there ever been during your tenure, any grant-funded positions?
There have. We've, we have one with the SAFER grants for hiring of three individuals in the fire department. I think years ago, we might have had a COPS grant as well. So we have had grant positions in the past. We don't currently, though.
Other questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item eight, Consider Passing Orders as Follows. 8A, Approval of Extension of City of Zion Temporary Personnel Plan through May 30th, 2020.
Take that one again. Earlier this month, we adopted a personnel plan to address how we were going to handle personnel in the City of Zion based on the stay-at-home orders and what we considered essential, our nonessential personnel, with the extension from the governor to the end of May. That, that personnel authorization was set to expire today pending the results of what the governor decided to do for May. With the extension, we needed to basically renew our personnel plan, personnel author, or temporary personnel plan under, under the COVID-19 rules. It's basically the same plan as we, we had last time. However, there are a couple of minor changes. We are actually bringing back more building inspectors. Again, this is just a minimum plan. We will try and bring more back to provide services as long as we can observe social distancing and proper precautions. But initially, we had one inspector per day. We're looking to bring back two a day, kind of alternating their, their time in office. And then wherever possible, if we can stagger shifts to get them out during, doing cold compliance in their vehicles, we can have more rotating in. We also had one, on the, on the plan, we had one person in accounts and finance set up to come in every day to make sure payroll, water billings, all that stuff are being handled. We're looking to do at least one or two a day. We think we're going to try and get more, more back than that even because we're able to observe six-foot distancing within the office. But this allows us some flexibility in that. But for the most part, we're looking within the next week or two to get basically full force back in, in here with precautions as necessary. But this extends the, the plan just to make sure that we are on agreement with at least the minimum.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on this, but I want to make a comment first. I voted for this plan the last time around, but I've had a chance to reconsider it and I'm thinking that we are an essential business. Government is exempt from those executive orders because of the nature of what we do. And as I was thinking about this, Walmart, Juul, other essential businesses are able to operate effectively, putting safety protocols in place, and I, I believe that we can do the same. So I'd like to suggest that we open City Hall to the public, put in proper safety measures in, in place, distancing, and following the governor's executive orders. I'd like to suggest that all of our departments are fully staffed, also following proper safety protocols. And to that effect, my motion is to table this ordinance.
Is there a second? No second?
Thanks for your consideration.
All right. Is there a motion to approve, approval of the extension of Zion, City of Zion Temporary Personnel Plan through May 30th?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there further discussion?
So how much down are we to the staff right now with this plan as it presents?
As, as presented, we're probably down four or five personnel in total. I believe Public Works is essentially back at full. First responders have always been at full during this time. So it's really just City Hall employees and Building Department, Accounts and Finance. So with two, with at least two coming back on building inspectors, there's two others that, that wouldn't be in the plan. Again, we're trying to get them back to full staff even adopting this. So there's two there, potentially one or two in finance, and then we have some administrators scattered throughout the city that are alternating shifts as well. You might actually be looking at six to seven out of the 108 full-time personnel.
So in contrast to what was just proposed, then sort of the only real difference would be opening up to the public is that?
Yes. Yeah, currently, we're proposing that we still maintain closure to the public for, for the facilities for protection. So what Commissioner McDowell said, I, I, that would, you know, we could discuss that as well, but that's for, again, for the protection of the workers to make sure we can keep performing essential services internally.
And are we still doing by appointment only?
Yes.
So folks are coming in, it's just by appointment only?
A lot of times, we're actually meeting them out externally, but...
At least for the building department, it's usually onsite. If they had some questions with a homeowner or contractor, we would go on onsite and meet them.
And for, for, in accounts and finance area, we typically are able to arrange, we, we ask what they need the appointment for. If it's just to, for example, pay utility bill, we arrange for Dropbox payment and then give them the other, other methods, whether it's direct debit. We try and accommodate without having to set schedule appointments, but we will under necessary circumstances. If it's for a water utility signup for somebody to get services, we'll arrange that. We try and do as much as we can electronically. But I would recommend we continue with the closure of the facilities to ensure protection of the employees.
And Dave, we've posted all of the hours on our Facebook page, on our website.
Yes.
The city hours, I know that's, I continue trying to go on those pages and update what the city hours are and the fact that our staff members are available by phone. I afforded my work number to my city, city cell, and I've been receiving several calls, which I'm able to handle safely from my, from my home and talk with the other department heads about issues that matter, whether it's in the building department or public works or, or otherwise, directed some people towards finance that haven't been able to get through and had our staff call them back. So I think, I really appreciate the motion, Commissioner, but I think one of the things that we're trying to make sure that we do is not reopen things too soon and to, because our, our job is to protect the, the health and safety of our employees and our residents as well. And we've been able to do that by monitoring, by the way we've been operating. So Clerk, please call the roll. I got one more comment or question. So what would have to happen in order for us to feel like we can be fully staffed and then open the, the doors for business? What, what would you envision us? What would have to be in place for us to do that? Well, I, I am following the guidelines of, of our, our governor. I happen to believe in science. I happen to believe in religion as well, but I am not going to take the chance of opening sooner and risking lives while we can do the, perform these services from home or to that point. So... Okay, so it'd have to be an order from the governor that all businesses are open again? Well, you asked about City Hall. Yeah, so what would have to happen for us to be back to a full workforce and City Hall open? That's the question. I think I, I think I just answered. Okay, so, so your answer, I'm just repeating it to make sure I've got it clear. Your answer is the governor would have to give us all clear, all businesses can be open and operating. Sure. I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with that. I think our, our council, based on the employment plan that we have in place, is also comfortable with that. I know there are some states that are moving forward with, with opening. Los Angeles opened its beaches and they've closed them all of a sudden because they've had a spike in the virus. And right now, if you look at the numbers in Lake County, we are third behind, just behind Cook and Kane County for infections. So I would rather err on the side of being safe than sorry. Okay. So according to the executive orders, we actually are an essential service, so we can be open, but the metric that we want to use is that all businesses, essential, nonessential, are safe to open. That's the metric we want to use, or you want to use. We. Yeah. It's a we decision. Well, no, I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote no on this. Well, that's fine. Yeah. So it's not a we. Well...
What, what is, what is the rush to, to open City Hall? What is that purpose?
It's, it's not a rush. I think that if essential businesses can figure out a way to operate safely, I believe that we can figure out a way to operate safely and serve the public.
I think we already have. The public is, the public can still...
I'm saying open and operate.
The public can still reach City Hall.
Yeah.
They can still get their services provided, but we're doing it in a manner that keeps both the citizens and our city staff safe. I don't understand why you're in a rush.
I'm not in a rush. I'm just...
And apparently you are.
Okay. I, I think you're mistaken.
Well, I, I agree with the mayor and I'd like to, even under the litigation that the governor is facing or is dealing with, I respect the fact that he continues to want to stay closed. So I, I agree with the mayor.
I, I, I fully accept your, your positions and just please accept mine. No, we do. I, and I want to add one other thing, too. Sometimes it's, it's not so much about what we're doing to be safe, too, Commissioners, what other people are doing. Sure. And I, I know when I've been out in public and going to stores for groceries, there are people that still aren't being this seriously and not abiding by the guidelines that have been established by the governor in terms of social distancing, wearing masks. As of tomorrow, May 1st, it's going to be essential that citizens in Illinois wear masks when they're out in, in public at a social business when social distancing guidelines can't be followed. Correct. Yeah. So understand your perspective and I appreciate it. Any, any other questions? No. Any other commentary?
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
No.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item number nine, Discussion Authorization and Approve. Consider Proposal from Deegan and Associates for Engineering Services for the Closed Zion Landfills per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Attached to the proposal for environmental engineering services for the city's closed landfill, groundwater analysis inspections and quarterly reporting to the IEPA is required as part of the city's post-closure permit. Additionally, proposal includes a continued submittals to IEPA, IEPA for the termination in the required landfill monitoring. Staff recommends approval of the quote of these services from Deegan and Associates from Libertyville for $32,000. This contract is for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year and will be budgeted within the waste fund.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second. Is there discussion?
A quick question. Is this amount, is this the same as last year's or is there...
This is, this amount is lower from one quarter. Okay. We are pursuing, requesting for the termination from...
Right.
IEPA. We've been doing that throughout this fiscal year. IEPA has added more requirements as we were doing this, of course. This is anticipation, Mr. Deegan feels we're very close and we will not need an additional funding on the fourth quarter. So this is shy of 9,000, I think, on the, on the fourth quarter.
Okay, thank you.
And Director Roberts, I vaguely recall someone moving into one of the landfills that was going to take over this responsibility, a solar company?
That was a solar, that was on landfill two on the flatter area. They were going to take over that 10 acres. That contract has not been finalized. Even if they purchased that land, we would still be responsible for the, the monitoring. That, we were looking at putting that within their contract that they do that, but there's been no contract for it, so we're still responsible for that.
Thank you.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item 9B, Consider Quotes for Asphalt Repairs per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Attached for three quotes for the engineering depart, from the engineering department has procured for asphalt repairs as a result from several main breaks from the last fiscal year. Staff is requesting that proposal, council will approve the proposal and accept the lowest responsible proposal from Seaforce Construction, Inc. in the amount of $24,138. Funding will be included in the 2020, 2021 fiscal water fund budget.
Is there a motion?
Shall move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
One quick question, Director Roberts. I noticed on one of the quotes from Peter Baker and Son, they have two different types of patching, three versus four. Can you speak to the difference in what the, the winning bid is going to use?
The three inches was for a binder. And then the two-inch is a surface course. There's two different price marks on that.
Okay.
The winning bid just included, it, it was designated that there would be a three-inch binder course and a two-inch surface. They, they submitted the proposal just a full five-inch instead of designating it out. They just gave a straight proposal.
Okay.
So the spec is still the same. It's still requiring a binder and a surface course.
All right, thank you.
And is it typical 50% down and the balance due?
We called the contractor and told them we do not do that. So he was fine with that. We talked to him prior to putting this in front of council.
I assume we're going to pay the lower amount, but the total was off by about $4, but I figured you guys were working out.
My math is off. Don't tell me my math is off. I'll check it.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item 9C, Request Permission to Fill One Battalion Chief Vacancy and Two Lieutenant Vacancies and Request Name for the Next Qualified Candidates from the Police and Fire Commission Battalion Chief Eligibility List and Lieutenant Eligibility List per Chief Lewis.
Thank you, Your Honor. As most of you know, tomorrow starts our transition from 2448 to 2472. With that, we've adjusted, developed one new shift, which required one more battalion chief. When a lieutenant gets promoted to battalion chief, it opens up a lieutenant spot, and then we need one-fourth lieutenant to fill that remaining spot. So just prior to this meeting, we had a meeting of the Police and Fire Commission. So we get it really lined up by May 1st, and they have tentatively approved releasing the names pending the approval through today's meeting. So I'm asking that Lieutenant Riker Campanella, who is the next eligible candidate on the current published battalion chief list, gets promoted to battalion chief effective May 1st. Firefighter Paramatch Eric Hershey, the next eligible candidate on the published lieutenant list, will be promoted to replace Lieutenant Campanella as of May 1st, 2020. And then Firefighter Paramedic Dean Kennedy will be promoted to the newly established lieutenant position effective May 2nd. The reason for the dip between May 1 and May 2 is just to maintain seniority rights for future need. So I'm just asking for approval of these promotions and to finalize with Police and Fire Commission to release the names effective tomorrow.
Is there a motion? Oh.
I just want to...
Administrator Naples has something he would like to say before the motion goes out?
Yeah, I just want to add a little bit to that, too, just because I know we're going to be talking about budget here shortly, and I just want to make sure everyone has all the information, that it's not just promoting, promoting positions. This was all part of the schedule and negotiations where we're actually reducing three full-time positions within the fire department by restructuring this, so that's what created the need for this, and supplementing with part-time employees rather than the full-time positions. So this was actually all part of a budget-saving measure that was negotiated and approved as part of the MOU at the last meeting.
I was going to ask that question after the motion, but you took it to the punch there to explain what that meant, that we're not hiring extra and how it impacts our budget, which we're going to talk about. Is there a motion to permission to fill the battalion chief vacancy and two lieutenant?
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, Chief, can you talk about when you say next qualified? What does that process look like when you're reevaluating the list?
Sure. So what happens is every three years, we have a lieutenant's eligibility list testing process, which consists of a written exam, oral interview, merit points from within department, and management points that come from each. That happens at the lieutenant rank, or for the lieutenant rank and for the battalion chief rank. Based on all those points, an eligibility list is established, and then when a position opens up, we typically go to the first person on the list and then just work our way down. So these are the next eligible candidates on those lists.
Thank you.
Is there a motion in a second? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item number 9D, Discussion Regarding the Budget for Fiscal Year 5, 1/20 through 4/30/21 per Administrator Naples.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I just want to clarify on, on that real quick. This is the general fund budget that we're discussing tonight. We did already approve the street and bridge and the motor fuel tax funds at a prior meeting. We will, I will be coming back for the remainder of the city funds at a later time, but this is the one that is, takes the most time, covers both of our operations, and will probably warrant the most discussion. So this is a snapshot of what we're looking at going forward. It is definitely not good news, but we kind of knew that going, going into this, that we were going to be having some financial, some major financial challenges before us. So what I'd like to do is just kind of go through, I'm going to hit the highlights of where there's major changes, and then I'll open it up for, for any discussions or for discussions as we hit those line items, I'm happy to, to address for clarification. Just so you know, the process, this is going through with each department head, their operations, we look at historical figures, we look at needs, you know, going forward, we make sure that we're not being recurring in one-time purchases, so if there was an item that was purchased last year that we're not doing this year, we don't just roll forward those items. So we'll just dig right into it here. So the first, the first couple items are just the general property tax levy that we already adopted, so showing the impact of that. As you can see, the general fund property tax revenue is actually increasing 215,000. Now, even though the entire levy only went up by 150, it's a reallocation of how we use those funds within there. We were able to reduce the levy on IMRF and social security funds because we had some, we dove those funds out of the hole, so going forward, we weren't going to need as much. So more funds were available in the general fund as part of that. We also are having an increase in the property tax levy for pensions of 227,000. That's coming straight out of a minimum state requirement of what we have to levy and put into those funds. So you'll see a corresponding increase in those expenses as we get to the police and fire departments as well. So while that shows up here as an increase in revenue, it's actually a matching increase in expenses as well down below. The next few items, sales tax, utility tax, income tax, replacement tax, and gaming tax, unfortunately, you're seeing a lot of decreases there except for replacement tax. Some of that is, I'm trying to adjust for an impact that we're going to have related to the coronavirus and the COVID impact on local businesses. We know that sales taxes are going to be down, we know that income taxes are going to be down due to businesses being closed during this time. I put a 10% factor in there, a 10% reduction. The thought behind that is, we're hearing projections of 15% to 18% reductions, you know, from a lot of communities, a lot of projections, but we also look at the makeup of our community and our biggest tax bases are Walmart, grocery stores, and Walgreens, CVS pharmacies, which are actually having more sales because they're having people run on toilet paper, medications, things of that nature. So I, I believe we're going to see a decrease in general, but we probably won't see as much of a decrease as other communities because our biggest tax base will probably help to offset the closure of other smaller businesses. So I put a 10% factor in there. I would, I would hope it's going to remain flat and that, you know, if we open up here, we'll, we'll start seeing compensation from, go the other way as businesses open, people will be surging out to, once things are safe, surging out to restaurants, stores, local businesses, but we had to put some sort of factor in there to account for that. So sales tax, utility tax, income tax, totaled down about 500,000. Gaming tax is another one that I have on here as a decrease of about $80,000, what I'm budgeting, that was on the rise. We budgeted 265,000 last year. We've been seeing about 20,000 to 25,000 a month, but since the, the closure, gaming cafes and gaming has not been allowed to run at all. So I'm budgeting basically two months of lost revenue, May and June for that, as well as a 10% reduction going forward, because I assume that once they're open, people are still going to be feeling economic impacts of this, and there's going to be less disposable income to be playing, you know, video gaming machines. So it's two months plus a 10% reduction. Again, we don't really know what the impact of this is going to be long-term, we just need to factor something in here. These are best estimates. Ambulance fees is another one I wanted to talk about. That's made up of three, three items. We have our general billings, which is just, Andre's is our billing provider, so when people have ambulance service, we bill their insurance providers, Medicaid, Medicare. So that's, that's a pretty solid number. We also bill monthly for CTCA transports, that, that's, that's consistent going forward. The new item in there is GEMT payments. And if you recall, a few months ago, we approved an intergovernmental agreement where for communities that do, I believe it's Medicaid transports here, that we're, we're getting about $200 or so on average for Medicaid transports, and we bill quite a bit more than that, so we, we have a highly disproportionate amount of Medicaid calls compared to other communities, and we end up bearing that burden because we don't balance bill patients beyond what we collect from Medicare, Medicaid. The GEMT program was designed to help offset some of that and get some funds basically to help the local and also funds to the state to, to offset some of those Medicaid calls. It's been slow going, getting that up and running. It's a big program and there's a lot of complexities to it, to how to manage it, but we have received a couple of small payments. So we, it's right on the cusp of, we, we hope, getting going. What I did is, I said, okay, we have 800 eligible calls on, on average a year, which would be at the rate that we've, we're seeing, again, nothing confirmed, but just based on the payments that, the couple of payments that we did get, 800 calls would be about 1.1 million a year. Under the GEMT program, half of that has to go back to DHS, so that'd be five, I think I calculated on about 580,000. And then I said, we know that, that's not going to all start coming in May 1st, so I actually took 75% of that, saying it's going to take a, a few months to ramp up, and that's where I'm putting the 420,000 in. That's the rationale behind it. My fear was putting too high of a number in and becoming reliant on that for our budget and then having it coming lower and not having those funds, or putting nothing or too low of a number in and us making decisions for our budget and then coming out that we didn't need to make another $400,000 in cuts or drastic decisions when it does come up. So we put that in there as a placeholder. I know that we're going to have, after today, we're going to have to have more discussions once, I'm sure you already know the bottom line, but we're going to have more discussions. We're hoping that we might get some more direction during that time, over the next week or two, to, to kind of zero in on that. Andre's is very much on top of this as far as communicating and watching this program because it affects a lot of their, their clients. But that's the number that's, that I put in there, and I just wanted to bring attention to that. Going down a little ways further, probably about a third from the bottom, the other number that you'll see there that's a big one is Viola host fees, which is the advanced disposal host fees. This one hit us hard this year. We're down about $700,000 from what was budgeted. Now, in talking with them, that was due to a permitting issue that the state, they, they had to do, this had nothing to do with the volume of trash going into any potential expansion, but as they take in trash, they have to do construction and ready cells within that site to receive that garbage. They had to do a construction project to do that, they, they went to the state for a permit, that permit was delayed. During that time, the garbage had to go somewhere, was diverted to another landfill. Therefore, our per ton, our couple, you know, 260 or whatever per ton that we get, was drastically impacted. In talking with them, they don't know when that's going to come back. So I had to be realistic and say, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to keep it flat. We're also expecting, part of the agreement with them is that when they come in for a citing application for the expansion, that they have to pay $150,000 to the city with that. So the number I have in there of 1.9 million is flat, the current fiscal year's actuals plus 150,000, but that's still 657,000 down from prior year budget. That's a big impact on what we are expecting for this, for the deficit to be this year. The rest of the items are just general revenues comparing to actuals, again, some COVID impacts, also some just general adjustments either up or down. Do you have any, this is the majority of our revenues are on this first page for the general fund, so are there any questions on this before I, before I move on? I know I could give a lot of information at you there. Page two, you'll see the rest of the, the revenue items. Again, not, not any real significant changes there, it's a lot of smaller dollar items, but it, it's still a big part of our, our budget. About a third of the way down, you'll see the insurance, medical, dental, life. There's three items there, pension insur, pensioner insurance, so that's individuals, retirees that are on our insurance plan, that they're paying the premiums for. So that's, that's a revenue item, they're, they're reimbursing us that expense. The employee share of the insurance, so whatever 10% or whatever percentage based on union contracts that the employees put towards their insurance, that's the 150,000. And then carrying forward the employee insurance concessions for another year, this is, this is one that we did last year that we were hoping we'd find some way to be able to get rid of, but last year as part of, of a budget fix, basically any raises that employees got, or a group of employees got, they also gave back as additional insurance concessions. So it was a net zero. It helped, it helped make sure that pensionable and salaries were, were staying current with market, but basically, they just contributed that much more towards their concession, so it's a net zero cash flow to the city to the tune of about 167,000. Nothing else really major on the regular revenues, but when you go down to the transfers in section, this is what makes up our other revenue within the general fund, which is transfers in from other funds or financing that we do. You'll see the first one there is other financing sources, that's a new item on here. That's the $1 million that we approved for the tax anticipation warrants. We're still moving forward on that, but obviously, it's April 30th, we're looking to close on that early May to get those proceeds. So that's a revenue item in this year. When we get down to the bottom, you'll see in other financing uses for the repayment of that. So it's all within the fiscal year, but we are showing that we're going to have a revenue item and a repayment expense item as we basically are shifting cash flow for the year, accelerating it forward rather than waiting to June and September for, for property tax distributions. The other line item there, that's a big change, is we budgeted a $1.2 million transfer from the water fund last year as part of the budget. The, the water fund is essentially not able to sustain that anymore as we talked about, so we had to remove the transfer. We don't have the water fund supplementing the general fund budget as part of this. So that's a $1,260,000 reduction in revenue compared to last year's budget. Any questions on page two right now before we go on? Okay. Page three is where we start to get into the, the expense side of things. So we have this broken out by public affairs, city administration, human resources, economic development, accounts and finance, police, public works, building department, and then fire. So I'm kind of going to just take those in chunks and hit the highlights of those. So starting out with public affairs, the big change you see is legal fees and notices in that line item was budgeted at 240,000 the prior year. Currently, I'm budgeting 140,000. Now, part of that is a reduce, reduction in our expenses of legal, but a big part of that is also reallocation, better tracking of where those expenses are being incurred. So a lot of employment issues or internal issues were just kind of lumped into public affairs legal. Now we're able to, to track better and charge, like if there's an employment issues within a specific department, we put those legal fees there rather than just putting it in public affairs. So you see some of those legal expenses go up in those departments, but they're being offset by the reduction of this line item here. So on page three, that's really the only significant change. Page four, the only major change is actually a reduction of expenses in the hospital insurance retiree line item. We had some retirees unfortunately either pass or come off of our insurance, so we no longer have that, that expense as part of, of our budget. So that's about $56,000 reduction there.
And that total listed there, that would be all retirees for the city that are still on the plan?
Correct. Please ignore my, over on the left there, I still have 199,000 as a sub-line item. That was last year's number, that wasn't updated, it's actually 142,766. Page five continues on with, with general public affairs, planning and zoning board, liquor commission, those are all subcategories. Again, not any major changes there. Human resources, the only major change we had was legal. Again, that's due to, we had an increase there, but that's just due to classification of where we're posting legal notices and legal fees related to personnel, general personnel matters. City administration, again, no major changes there. Just, just for reference, as we go through this, all salary line items are basically bookmarks or placeholders. We have in here what the contractual increases are for staff, and then also other increases that we're budgeting in. In many cases, I've budgeted a 2% increase just as a, let's see what this picture looks like. Any, again, a budget's a guideline, it doesn't mean we have to spend that, but we wanted to put something in there. Any actual personnel increases or raises will have to be adopted and approved by council, so it could be higher, it could be lower based on those discussions, but I wanted to put something in there so we get a picture of where we're at. Page six, start going into accounts and finance. We, the, the only big change in that section is about midway down, you have a consultant other line item. We budgeted 28,700 last year, but then we engaged with Azovar to do a audit of our, all of our utility taxes, make sure that everyone's being billed what they should be, making sure that they're paying basically North Shore Gas, Comcast, all of them, that the city's getting what they should be. And then what we did is you, we paid them, based on what they find, they projected out, you basically pay them 12 months of savings as a result of that. Additionally, there was a one-time payment in there because they, they were able to go back a few years and say, okay, we're going to negotiate a lump sum for what you underpaid. Azovar got 40% of that, so we got about $48,000 in that lump sum total. That's what's in your actual, which is causing the $20,000 budget overage, but we're reducing that actually down to $5,000 from 20, it was 28,000, now it's going to be 5. I got confirmation from Azovar on the remaining payments for that 12-month period, and that's what the total's going to be. So we have a reduction in that line item, in the expenses.
So is there any ongoing increment to the finding of that audit?
Yeah, it, it's ju, it's in the utility taxes on revenue on the first page, it's in the utility taxes and
So those are still down 137?
Yeah, but again, that's, a lot of that is because of the 10% factor from the, that we're anticipating people are going to be maybe cutting their cable because they can't afford the bill, changing cell phone plans, things, so a lot of those taxes, they might be, instead of heating, air conditioning their house to 65, do it at 70.
Right.
So
Okay.
So it's up some because of what they found, offset by a 10, 10% reduction. The very bottom there, page six, it starts in the salaries for the, or starts the police department. We did have a increase there, but just remember that last year we budgeted, we were under, is it three or four personnel? Personnel?
Last year we had one.
Okay. So we budgeted knowing that we were going to be short some individuals. We are now back at full staffing, what we can operate at, not what we'd like to be at. But so a big chunk of that is the now full year budgeted of those salaries plus contractual and other budgeted increases. Again, based on negotiations with the union. So that's the big increase there. Page seven, in the middle of the page, this is still police department. Pension contribution expense up $152,000. This is one of the pieces when I was talking about the property tax increase at the very top for pensions going up. I'll hand what it was. Going up 227,152 of it is on the police side. So you have an increase to that expense line item here. We also have an increase in legal fees, notices. A big chunk of that is, again, what we had. We had the legal prosecutions, the monthly prosecutions were in public affairs. That's just a general city expense. Those are over in the police department, there's primarily police department prosecutions. So it's just a, it's a cost of the police department, but it's not, I mean, sorry, we have to put it in your budget, but it's a net zero for the city as far as the classification. Actually, it's a minor savings because I think we're $1,000 a month less with the current attorneys than we were in the past.
I mean, we're back up, right? Because we just exceeded the 100,000 savings from the first page, right? So I think I noticed 95 here and then there was 14 allocated to another department.
Right. The majority of that is, what you'll see is our legal overall is up, but we had some arbitration issues this past year. We had some kind of one-time unique things. We would have had that under, you know, any, I mean, not just because he's sitting here, but we would have had that with any firm that we had. We had a lot of cannabis issues that got put on us as far as legal compliance, planning, zoning.
That's kind of typical for every year though, right?
What's that?
That's typical for most years though, right? That we have some sort of.
Not to this degree. I mean, we haven't had employment arbitration in years. And that was a major expense. Again, the cannabis, you know, we might have things on a year-to-year basis based on legal defenses and things. And we try and provide some sort of balance for that. But what department it's in varies from year to year. So, I mean, we had police legal issues a while ago. We had public works, we've had building. Building was a big one unfortunately with some of the litigation that we had there. So we had kind of, even though we kind of planned for like one major thing maybe a year, we had like three or four hit in one year. So.
And the prosecutions are still third party?
Yes, yes.
And that's not changing anytime soon?
Well, we're discussing with them right now, trying to negotiate that down, especially with courts being closed and things of that nature. But and we are still looking, we're always keeping our options open. You have to be careful because you get what you pay for on prosecutions. Because there's a revenue component to this as well as far as how successful they are in prosecutions and collecting those tickets. You know, you don't want to save $1,000 a month but lose $5,000 in the corresponding revenues by it not being handled. But we're always looking at that on an annual basis. You had a good decrease in the liability insurance line item of $55,000. As we discussed at the last meeting, that was due to the law enforcement liability premium basically being cut in half. The deductible of that went down as well. So we have a deductible, a couple of lines below that, we have a liability deductible that we reduced down to $25,000. We always put something in there for deductible, but our exposure was a lot higher before when we had $100,000 deductible. Now it's a $50,000 deductible, so we always just budget basically half of a deductible should something come up. So those two hand in hand actually generated a good chunk of savings in the PD. Page eight, again, not a whole lot of major swings there. The only other one you'll see is about halfway down, the other equipment line item went up $29,000. That's due to the Starcom access fees. We talked about that when we went to approve that purchase. Majority of that is going to be covered by, majority of the radio purchase is going to be covered by the Durene Jetspeed, but we still are responsible for the annual fees, maintenance fees and other fees that go along with that. So that's the big reason for that. Other than that, any questions on the PD before I move on to public works? All right.
Yeah, so I guess we can talk about this more next time, but I wanted to address the overtime. Now that we've increased the staffing, because we were over budgeted last year for the year ending. So I wanted to see if we can tweak that number down.
From the 350,000?
Yeah.
Okay. And we could talk about that and see if there's a, if we can zero in on. I mean, we're kind of going off of historicals where we had better staffing. And I think we used to be at about 250,000, but we kept creeping over that just based on pay increases, just different rates of pay. We might be able to zero in a little more on analyzing that number, but.
Yeah, it'll be hard to do commissioner, just because you're just kind of taking a stab at the wind trying to nail it down. I do anticipate being fully staffed, but it'll be considered a little less than the 417 we realized this past year. So many of those shifts were to cover shortages and now that we're fully staffed, people can take time off or somebody can be sick, we won't mandate somebody coming in over.
So maybe we can look at how many shifts were to cover shortage and take that off the 417 to get a more realistic. We'll take a look at zeroing in more on that. Going to public works, again, no real, you know, even in the salary, we had some leave, some come in, so we were actually pretty flat even with step increases and changes there contractually. You'll see overall, and it goes on to page nine, overall, the public works budget is actually down $8,200 from prior year budget. They actually even came in under budget this year by about $30,000. So the big change there is probably streetlight energy. We actually are going up 20,000 on that line item. We were able to offset that with other cuts. We've gone through painfully over the past year looking at LEDs and what would that do for us and things of that nature, only to determine that the majority of our monthly streetlight bill has nothing to do with the actual supply of energy, but the actual lease cost of all of the poles and equipment that comment has throughout the city, we pay for that to have them have that equipment here within the city. So that's probably 90% of our bill on a monthly basis. It is the lease or rental of that equipment. We're only talking a couple thousand dollars probably a month in actual electric supply. So doing a big LED conversion or pulling lights, every other light we even talked about would not have the financial impact that we would hope on this number. Public service program, the only change there really was, well, we are actually eliminating the part-time position for the public service program. So that's, it's just a one full-time person. And we also have public works employees supplementing that program. But then that was offset by a change in coverage levels on the health insurance. So you can see a public service budget actually is down $682, so pretty flat there. Going on to the building department, any questions on public works before I go to building? No? Okay. Going to the building department, again, salary line item, up $11,000. Some of that's just the contractual with the union employees, union and administrative employees. We also had some changes in health insurance levels. People get married, divorce, have kids, change levels, that happens throughout the year. So we're budgeting actually a 21,000, almost $21,000 increase there. The total building budget went up $30,000 and it's pretty much made up of those two items. Everything else is flat for the year or minor ups and downs. The mowing program, which is overseen by the building department, we did decrease that a little bit. Initially, we talked about increasing it from 20 to 30,000 to attract more staff because that also drove a revenue line item for our mowing costs. But with Corona happening, we don't see that we're going to have a summer mowing program, especially, you know, putting six kids in a van and driving around town or young adults in a van and driving around town is not in our future. So we're supplementing that, again, we're looking at supplementing that with internal staff, whether it be in the building or public works department to get mowing done. But we would still be looking at the cost of the mowing supervisor coming back to basically oversee the entire program as far as coordinating all the letters that go out, what properties need to be mowed and how to direct that. So that's, we went initially up to 30,000, but now we have reduced that down to 15 because we're able to manage the distancing of that individual at least. Public property, this classification is just basically overarching city as a whole. So our internet service, our website, general phone servers, all that. That basically anything in the city that benefits the city as a whole and not a specific department goes into this public property category. Again, we went up $13,000 here. The big piece of that is under other equipment IT, we went from 10,000 to 19,000. This was when we switched from to Canon for our copiers. Individual department line items for equipment lease and rental went down. And now that we're on our managed print service program, which is just a monthly cost for all toner, all maintenance of citywide equipment, we have that expense classified into this line item. So while up here, the individual departments are down in that line item. So that's 9,000 of the $13,000 increase. Questions before I move to fire?
Somewhere in here was there, and maybe it's part of public property, the server that the city had to.
To save backups?
Is that what you're referring to?
Yep, is that part of this?
Yeah, and that's, so under, if you look at the, that same line item, other equipment IT, we budgeted 10,000, but we had, our actual was actually 23,000. That's when we had to do the rental of the equipment for the backups, make sure we were getting solid backups until we got the servers in place. So our actuals were over budgeted, but we're back down to our normal plus the copier cost. So it's in that 19,000, or it's in that 23,000, but that's not going to be a reoccurring cost. Yeah. Going to fire department, that first item there at the bottom of page 11. Again, we have a, we basically are flat for the year and that reflects the restructuring, reducing the three full-time firefighters, but we're offsetting a lot of that with a POP program. We're budgeting that based on two POP per shift. Well, we're actually budgeting it based on what we expect to have, which is probably one POP per shift and then half the time we'll be able to fill a shift with another POP. But until we get the POP program fully in place, we're not going to fully be able to offset that overtime, which we'll get to in a second. But this reflects the MOU now based on going to the 2472, the reduction to 21, offset by contractual increases and the POP program. So that stayed flat from prior year. Fireman overtime, this is where it's kind of a roller coaster ride. We budgeted initially last year anticipating that we would utilize more POP to supplement, but then as you know, we lost a lot of firefighters to Lake Villa going to a full-time department for the lieutenants and BCS. We lost 25% of our, well, probably more than that now.
Eight?
Eight out of 24, we lost a third of our staff this year, which under the contract, we had to continue maintain staffing. We did MOUs with them to be able to reduce down to six in certain situations per shift versus seven. But we had a huge spike in overtime just to make sure we had staff in station to man the apparatus. So you can see that we had a $600,000 overtime expense for this fiscal year. Now, if we didn't do the reorganization, that probably would have been, we probably would have had to budget somewhere in the $700,000 to $800,000 range for next year. I anticipate that if we were at 21 full-time staffing, that this overtime budget would probably be in the $140,000 range. But because we're at 15, 16? Well, 12 firefighter paramedics. Yeah. But we have to get to 21, we have to get a list in place that's going to, they're testing tomorrow, I believe, or Saturday on that. We know we're going to have a couple of months at least that we're still going to be needing to fill overtime shifts. We're going to utilize POP under the new MOU as much as possible for that. We're going to utilize the MOU to go down to six when we can under the conditions. But we still need to budget a couple of months of that continued high overtime on top of the $140,000 that we'd be looking at. So we're not seeing the full savings of going to the 2472s in this year just based on the staffing levels that we have temporarily. But we are seeing, you know, $500,000, $400,000 savings over what we would have had to budget until we got the staffing up to place, so.
And David, if I might just interrupt?
Yeah.
I just noticed, I'm looking for my agenda, we didn't approve the new MOU which is supposed to start.
It was approved at the last meeting.
When it went to August 31st? Did we do that the last one?
Yeah, I think we did.
I just don't remember doing that one.
Oh, no, we just approved the 2472.
The 2472 MOU, I don't think we did a separate MOU.
Yeah, that was supposed to be on this agenda extending it through August 31st.
Okay, we'll probably have to do that at the May, the meeting in May then.
Which I don't think they'll already be dropping to six, but it's just a point.
We can kind of go status quo with them as long as they understand that, but we'll have to get it to.
Yeah, I don't know why you catch that.
Close the lamp, no, I apologize for that. We were so focused on the 2472 MOU that I missed that on the last one. Pension contributions, again, same thing as police, that went up $75,000, offset by the revenue up above, but those continue to go up every year. I'm hoping that we're going to see a savings that either won't go up by as much, will stay flat or go down based on us going to the 21 full-timers versus the 24. Because when this was, when the actuarial calculation was done, it was based on staffing in place at the time, which had eight more people than we do now, now that we're at this level. The actuarial contribution of who you have to provide benefits for in the long term is obviously way down, but we won't see that until the levy of coming up in December of this year. So this is actually last year's levy and actuarial requirement. Workers' comp premiums, we had, again, we had an increase in the renewal. Unfortunately, a lot of that, the workers' comp nationwide is in the fire industry. So the rates on that went up significantly and fire accounts were a large portion of that. Luckily, we did have an offset of healthcare insurance, again, due to staffing reductions as well as changes in categories. A lot of times, especially when you have, when we had eight staff leave, that was a lot of our senior staff. A lot of times you'll get young, you know, maybe single or just married. get young, you know, maybe single or just married, you know, you have lower coverage levels. So, um, so we're seeing about a hundred and thirty thousand, uh, dollar savings on that line item. The other in, big increase on here is under the uniforms and safety equipment. We're planning to get this all in place. We're planning on having a, a pool of potentially twenty POPs, uh, to be able to get the two per shift. Unfortunately, you'd have to have an initial investment to get to that pool, so I broke down the POP, uh, uniforms and fire gear that we do have to, um, purchase to be able to keep them safe out in the field. So you'd have about fifty thousand dollar increase in that line item. We should see that drop back down then next year, um, because we can reutilize the, the gear based on the POP turnover. Page thirteen finishes off the fire department. Uh, the other big change we had here was motor equipment. We did budget, uh, some big repairs to some of the apparatus, uh, engine and, well, it wasn't the ladder truck, it was just the engines, right?
We did budget for ladder and truck. We just converted the money from the truck to get the engine down.
Right, right. So that will not be recurring this year. Um, so you haven't, we budgeted forty-three thousand, which is an eighty-eight thousand dollar reduction, uh, from the prior year. So in total, the fire department, um, budget increased by a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Again, seventy-five of that, you wanna break it down into just big item, seventy-five thousand of that is the pension increase, um, the remainder is the offset of the, the overs and unders, uh, for the rest of those line items. Uh, ESDA, uh, nothing, nothing major here. Um, their overall budget went from forty-one thousand, thirty-eight thou- thirty-eight thousand nine hundred, a savings of twenty-six hundred dollars. Um, and then at the very bottom there, uh, you'll see the other financing uses line item. Um, that's the, the repayment of the tax anticipation warrants and the associated costs with it. So, um, again, that's a, a offset to the revenue plus, plus expenses, um, relating to that financing. Bottom line, um, which is what everyone looks, looks to, and I'm sure you looked at, and you got this right away, is, uh, we have a net deficit of two million dollars, uh, that we're looking at this year. And when I say net deficit, that's this year's expenses exceed this year's revenues by two million dollars. Um, we already carried over a one-point-four million dollar deficit, uh, from the prior year, which, or deficit fund balance. Basically, that's the cumulative effect of every year's income or, or loss. Um, so this, this year it's a two million dollar deficit with a, so we end up with an ending fund balance deficit of three-point-five million dollars. Um, so we're looking at two million dollars to be able to, uh, sustain operations, um, without digging ourselves out of the hole from prior years.
Would you recommend that we dig ourselves out from prior years?
Uh, long-term, that would be the recommendation. Um, getting into that, that extra one and a half million dollars took ten years to dig into. I would not recommend we try and dig out of it in one. Um, that, that's gonna be a long-term discussion, again, whether it's, you know, we're still, we're still pursuing nuclear legislation, we're still pursuing the, the cannabis cultivation, we're still looking at home rule. Um, those are other, others things that we're trying to do to dig out of this, that if they came into place, that would definitely dig us out long-term. Um, I don't wanna make, uh, any drastic decisions on an additional one and a half million. Um, we could, we could sustain ourselves if we just stay afloat with that two million. Um, but we will have to dig ourselves out of that eventually, but that's, that's more of a long-term, uh, very long-term discussion because it was a long-term to get into it.
And to that point, home rule would have taken our revenues for sales tax from two-point-four to what?
I estimate we would have had an additional probably million dollars a year in sales tax revenue. Um, which if we had that last year, um, our deficit would have only been four hundred thousand, and you'd have, you know, it's a cumulative effect of that, a million dollars of revenue every year.
Along those lines, uh, if, if we do achieve the population, um, status for home rule, um, when would we be able to see some income?
Well, unfortunately, everything's been delayed on the census because of, of Corona, uh, the COVID. Um, I believe they're looking at getting door-to-door individuals going back outdoor-to-door for the census in August, is what I'm hearing. Um, I was hoping to have a result, well, everyone was hoping to have the results of the census by September, in which case we could have implemented any changes by the end of the year to start receiving those taxes, that revenue maybe spring of next year. Um, but that's not gonna be the case. We're, we're not looking at this fiscal year for those, for those revenues.
Commissioner, do you have any ideas of how we might dig our way out of this?
Yeah, I do.
Do, do you care to share?
I will say, Ian, all I can is...
I guess I'd start by, by saying that, um, the spending side of this budget, um, looks, um, very good. I mean, I, I don't see any fat in this, per se. I mean, there's obviously some things that can be tweaked here and there. Um, we really just don't have the income. Um, but we really also don't have a way of generating any income at this time for this budget year. I mean, the things you mentioned like, uh, the nuclear fuel and, uh, maybe cannabis revenue, um, I think I've heard you said, we really can't count on that for, for this year.
You've been trying to do the nuclear for probably five years now?
Yeah.
And the cannabis isn't in Supreme Court.
Right. So in answering that question, I'm gonna ask you, David, um, where would you be able to find, um, the, are we looking at two million?
Yeah.
Where would you, in this budget, where would you be able to find that two million?
Um, well, as you said, a lot of the revenues are out of our control. Um, and I, I said this at a prior meeting when we were initially talking about the tax anticipation warrants, that I, I hate going down that road. Um, but that would be my recommendation again, is, you know, we, we looked at other potentially last fiscal year, um, that we were gonna have a million dollars that we needed by April, that's now gonna go to this year. Um, it's a cycle you get in, but if we, if we borrowed, you could increase the, the funding sources' revenue. Um, that does create a deficit, additional deficit in the following year, though. Um, but it gives a year or two to try and continue pushing revenue sources to see where home rule ends up, to, uh, continue pushing on that. Uh, as you said, our, our expenses, looking, looking at our expenses over the past five, six years, um, they've gone up by less than the super price index, and actually half of consumer price index, once you factor the pension increases, uh, out of there, which again, are kind of out of our control. So our spending is well below, if not relatively flat, um, on an annual basis, and that's been with departments at a bare-bones skeleton crew. Um, so I, I look at it as a, a revenue side, and borrowing doesn't generate revenue, it actually creates a liability for future years. Um, but...
So your suggestion is borrow more money?
So I guess just to press on that point, I guess what I heard was, we would cut the two million down to one million if we go for anticipation again in December?
If you did a million or a million and a half, uh, de- depending on what, what amount, like if, if you did a million and a half and you, you'd get down to a five-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit, um, we'd still have to look at where, we would get that from, you know, but, you know, I, I hate to say it, but we're becoming practice pros at, you know, squeezing the last drop. We're beyond squeezing the last drop, we're squeezing the rhino lemon, how to get the juice, like, but, um, we're, we're not gonna get two million from the expense side, but if we got that down to a smaller amount, supplement with the borrowing, which again, I, I understand, it's a, it's a dangerous cycle to get into. Um, but without drastic impacts on services to the residents, um, that's, that's what I'm proposing.
I just wanna understand that option.
That's an option.
I just wanna understand that option, though, of, that would look at, uh, going back for anticipation warrants?
In like December.
Or one and a half in December?
Correct.
And then that would take us down to about five hundred thousand, and then some of that would get rolled into twenty-two?
Yep, and that's where you get, that's where you get the cycle, the bigger cycle, because now you have a million and a half less revenue next year.
I get it, but that's what financing does, it buys, it buys you time, and then at what rates are now, I mean, we're not paying a lot for the use of those funds.
How, how much are we paying? Because I see the other financing uses is a million, uh, twenty-five thousand. So how much of that is the, the usage fee or the, the interest fee that we're paying on that?
Well, the, the interest I'm expecting to be somewhere in the, uh, twelve thousand dollar range. Um, that twenty-five thousand, basically the twenty-five thousand is what we're looking at. It might actually be higher than, you know, a bit higher than that once we get the final closing, the final terms. Um...
So that other financing is the total cost?
It's the repay, it's the repayment of a million plus the, the cost.
All right.
It might be a million thirty-five, I mean, you could forty, depending on final terms, but I, I plug in something there right now.
Yeah, so not, not a good option, really. You're saying it might be our only option, um, apart from...
It's an option.
Yeah, I, I mean, apart from what we're all avoiding saying, um, and that is personnel. That's, is there any other places that we can cut in this budget besides personnel?
Um, I, I understand where you're, you're going with that, and like you said, it's what we're all avoiding, but I don't look at, I personally, from administrative standpoint, don't look at that as an option. Um, because it becomes then a matter of what services is the public willing to live without. Um, we always, we, we continue to, every one of us gets calls daily, potholes. Um, and you get a, you get the seven, eight calls a day, and you're trying to figure out how to scramble to respond. You're getting the, you know, police is getting, we're all getting the calls every day, already trying to just keep us afloat on services. Um, and we're managing, even with the skeleton crew, any, but we're at critical mass with that. Any reduction in that, th- there's no way to continue, to continue even managing at this point. Um, we've got a hundred and eight full-time employees, seventy of which are first responders. Um, you're, you're talking two million dollars, you're talking twenty employees. Uh, there's no way, so, so when, I, I get what you're saying, when you say there's nowhere to get it. Is that an option? Finance director hat on, that makes, that changes the numbers and makes that two million less. City administrator hat on, I don't know how you continue to have the city function.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have, we wouldn't have the staff to provide the services at the level that we're providing services. So it'd be service cuts.
Yeah.
I guess is that something that the council wants to even put on the table?
Well, I'd ask you that, I guess I'd ask you that question for, for me. I, I, I look at it right now in this, in this time, looking at services and looking at the loss of people losing jobs. Uh, how many million Americans are filing for unemployment? Uh, we passed our city employees over the last year and a half to make some tremendous sacrifices in their salaries. Uh, I can say as the mayor, I wouldn't be comfortable with that, especially when you start talking about services. And I've talked to, uh, both of our chiefs about this, uh, cutting our, any of our public safety, uh, service is, is out of the question, especially during, during these times when we need, uh, first responders. So, I'm just speaking for myself in that. I, I don't like the thought of putting people out of work, uh, if it's not, eh, putting people out of work and then putting us in a position from a, a city standpoint that we cannot provide services. And I think last year before, uh, Mayor Hill, uh, stepped down, one of the things that we talked about as a city council was all the measures we were gonna take to, if we didn't get a home rule when it went out to refer to render, all the things that were going to happen in the city if it didn't pass. And of course, we had our opponents for it, it was defeated soundly, the people spoke. And as a result of that, we started cutting some of the services, and then we started getting the calls. Well, what happens to the services here? How come we can't get services here? So I, I think...
What a situation.
So i- it's not, it's a, we're in a terrible situation. But, but I still think we have to honor our, our employees, we have to honor our citizens, uh, with the services that are there, and that's one of the reasons, just getting back to our earlier discussion, uh, Commissioner McDowell, I think it's so essential that we continue to, and I know people have different opinions about it, this is just mine. Uh, I'm gonna err on the side of, of safe with our employees, number one, that are out there in the streets, uh, all the time.
Sure.
And I'm gonna err on the side of our citizens that look for us to be leaders in times of like this, when they need us to provide that structure. The others that don't believe in it, uh, I, I don't know, I don't know how to address those people. But, but I, I can, I know this with the coronavirus. I don't know if life will ever go back to normal the way we see it. Uh, in this past day, uh, the CDC reported that sixty thousand Americans have lost their lives to coronavirus. That's, that surpassed the total of every American that lost their lives in the Vietnam War. So for those that wanna say, uh, this virus is a hoax, uh, those numbers say otherwise. So I, I am, I, I hate to make this, I'm just not, uh, political in that way, but I am cautious when it comes to what we're, what we're, what we've been elected to do in terms of, uh, servicing our citizens and ensuring their safety.
I see it simply as, as a question of maintaining city operations. Um, we have an obligation to the public. Uh, we have to provide, um, police and fire, we have to provide public works, uh, we need support staff, we need building inspectors for code enforcement. They expect these services from us. Um, yes, we have a deficit that we have to deal with down the road, um, but in the meantime, we gotta keep the lights on. And so if we have to borrow some money, that's what we're gonna have to do.
I might just add something. I mean, just, we're a department at head level of sitting here. The hardest thing to do when I'm coming up with my budget is to predict, because the nature of the business is just flexible, and if I look at my overtime, I look at Chief Henderson's overtime, it's almost, it's over half a million as it sits now. In theory, if I'm staffed perfect, and I'll just call that perfect, my overtime is probably gonna be, on a good year, it's gonna be less than fifty thousand dollars. Because starting May one, we know exactly who's working every day for the entire fiscal year. And the only time I have to pay overtime is if somebody calls in sick, which is, in our department, is really not very often in the past. Um, what becomes very unpredictable now is, in our business, one worktop injury can turn from two weeks to six months to over a year, and boom, that hundred thousand dollar overtime budget just became huge. This year, we lost eleven people. About, when, before this whole thing started, budget issues in the fire department, we were at twenty-seven people a day that are out on the department. We're now down to, as of tomorrow, or as of the end of May, twelve total, you know, working guys on the streets. If you add in the battalion chiefs, that's another eight, so we have twenty people total. So we're seven, eight short, you know? We're managing, but I can't predict the overtime. I can't predict, I, I wouldn't have predicted an engine was gonna need eighty thousand dollars of repairs this year. But do I put eighty thousand this year? Do I ask David to budget seven hundred and fifty thousand for a new one next year? You know, fifty-three thousand for a truck, or one-point-two million for a truck? I can't put a fire out if I don't have a fire engine or a fire truck, you know what I mean? So when I'm sitting there doing budgets, I can't say, oh yeah, well, I have had a discussion with Dave, and we've had overtime right now. He kinda played the middle. I told him, well, let's go a little bit less. And he's like, well, let's play a little bit more. And I get it, because we should have had our five guys on shift in January. Well, for reasons out of our control, we didn't get tests done in January, we didn't get them February, March, April, or May, and now we're looking at, hopefully having everybody in by June. So we get five guys on in June, and we get that POP program. The POP we have now will sustain quite well, be much more comfortable if we go to our twenty, fifteen or twenty. We did that, that overtime number's gonna probably drop significantly. But I know where Dave sits, he can't put a low number in there. Same with the G M T. And we've talked about that. That's, they've always said that's a million dollar chunk right to your profits. But until you have sustained, you know, projections of showing that, how can you go off of that? You know, so that's the difficulty probably for any of the departments, guessing what's gonna happen. And that, that's where it's, could be high, and it could be a lot less in this budget, but I can't predict... but I can't predict that today for April 30 for next year.
And again, you throw the uncertainty of, of COVID in this. You know, we, we've talked about this, that some departments are going away from allowing their firefighters to work at other departments because it creates additional exposure. So, you know, you do, are we going to lose potential POPs that we had in the pool? So you, you modeled this, assuming growth in POP pools. We were seeing that, we were seeing a good response on POPs, and then this hits. And now that retracts back where people become more cautious. Are you going to take another shift as a firefighter, part-time, in risk exposure to additional patients? So, again, you try and model things the best you can, and like you said, that's, that's across the board with every department. I, I tend to try and err conservatively than, than more optimistically, just because I've been here long enough to know that, that things happen. But, you know, again, whether you're looking at 1.8 million or 2 million or 2-1, it's, it's a daunting number. Adjusting overtime down, 50,000 in police or 50,000 in fire, okay, we're looking at 1-9 instead of 2.
And I think under normal circumstances, having a budget deficit, we would say to our department heads, give the budget back and say, you know, what else can you cut? Have, under normal circumstances. The budget that has been presented to us, have you already gone through that process and, and reduced things that can be reduced?
There, there's a, there's a couple items that we're looking to go, that we're still trying to, to find too. We, we wanted to get a num, we wanted to get something in front of, I would say this is 98%. This is what we've done. We've, I would say, I don't want to say play that game, but we've been doing that, we've been doing this long enough that they know, I'm going to come back to them and go, hey, you know, we, we've done that on the back and forth on our individual meetings. There's a couple items that we're still looking at that we might be able to shave some here and there. Not too many. We, we've gone as bare as, as we can on this, big picture, so.
Mayor, in, in addition to answering your question, you know, what, what to do. There's certainly some hypothetical things that are, are milling around in, in my head. But they're the kind of things that I would prefer not saying at this meeting until I've had a chance to talk about it. Because they're operational in nature. Until I've had a chance to talk to the department heads. So this is an idea, see what you think about it. Mayor, would, would you join me in meeting with the department heads? So I can talk about some operational things, bounce it off of the department heads and, and see if that's an idea that's worth bringing to, to the whole council?
Absolutely. Okay. I, I think one of the things that I have done on a pretty consistent basis, and I've talked with Administrator Nabel and Director Roberts about this. I have been available to the department heads since I've taken over as mayor and talked with them about a lot of different things. Finances, operations, relying the commissioner. So I think that conversation is, is well worth having, and I would join you with that on that.
So are you planning on having a department head meeting tomorrow?
We weren't initially because we were having a meeting, we were having, maybe we have a department head meeting before a council meeting.
Right, right.
So with, with the special meeting being today, that wasn't the plan. We can, we can coordinate, we can schedule that with department heads. Is it something you want to talk to the department heads as a whole about?
Yes.
Or on an individual basis?
Whole.
Okay. All of our department head meetings have been by teleconference. We could probably set something up if people haven't rebooked that with other times.
I'm not available tomorrow.
Earlier today, I canceled it. The reason I'm laughing is I canceled saying we're having the, we can talk tonight about anything that we need. So probably other things have taken that place. Can we maybe do them on Monday?
Well, if you're interested, you're available 10:30. Go ahead. That, that, that doesn't work for me tomorrow.
Okay.
I, I've got a couple of meetings, virtual meetings tomorrow. So, I mean, I was going to say Friday, but tomorrow is for-
Tomorrow's Friday. I'm used to this being a Tuesday.
I've lost track of days.
Well, I, I, it can be scheduled, so.
Okay, let's, let's, I mean, let me, if, if you want to send me a couple times, or what doesn't work for you, I can coordinate that with the department heads and we can try and get something early next week.
Okay.
Or tomorrow if we're able to, but most likely it'd be probably early next week.
For what it's worth, when I was saying, I mean, everybody's in this boat. Our neighbors' fire districts around us, you know, they rely on only a property tax. And they're all scrambling to get bank loans right now just to get through till their property tax comes in. A department I know to the south, larger city, they just found out today, just today, they're going to lose 1.5 million just because of closure or something in their town, you know? We're, I was telling David, we're just kind of used to rolling with the punches here with these kind of things. Cities that aren't used to all of a sudden, boom, you lost your revenue. They're getting alerted, you know?
Cities and businesses.
Yep.
It's been, it's, it's been, I've never seen anything like this in my lifetime.
It seems to be happening every year of my tenure here. It seems to be something new that's never happened around. I'm speaking for our other department heads here, I believe. We have scratched, scraped, and have continued to operate with very minimal staff. And ensuring that we provide the same level that we were 10 years ago. If we're talking bodies, we need to realistically look at the impact with that body. There's no way in public works I can lose a body and not impact some source or some service. That service being maybe I don't fill any potholes in, outs. Maybe I don't plow any out. Examples and realistically taking what this happens if you do A, what's going to happen to B. This year alone, we're plowing this city with seven individuals. Five years ago, they had 15.
That, that's where it becomes difficult.
We're, we're, we're subbing water department employees to accomplish that. However, within some of those storms, we had water main breaks. So now you're asking me to sit here and have individuals putting in 12 hours plowing snow and then provide another six to eight hours trying to repair a water main break so individuals can get up in the morning to take a shower, it's that simple.
And that's what I'm talking about hitting the point of critical math. Employees can't continue to do more with less.
None of us have that fluff of losing bodies anymore and continuing. So when we start talking about this, we need to really look at it as, if I lose this, we have to lose this. There's no way of maintaining it. And, and I get it, and I understand, I'm a taxpayer in this town, I, you know, I, I want to be able to call up and go, hey, hey, John, my house is on fire. And him not going, well, I'll pull up the horses and we can see if we can get out there because the truck has no gas. I, I know that's kind of drastic, but it's, it's, that's the thinking. I just think we really need to look at, and I understand the tough decisions you guys have, same tough decisions we have to keep doing. This has become kind of a norm for us. I mean, I've been flattened, I've been flattened at what point, 1.6 for 10 years. Somehow we were able to bring it under this year. I know it wasn't much, but it was still under, but it's, it's, it's giving up some services to accomplish that. That doesn't stop that phone ringing on my desk every day. Where the citizens coming in here writing on the paper and coming up here and saying, you guys aren't doing your job and I paid my taxes.
Or calling me.
Or calling you.
You, you've published your photo burn and everything, right?
I didn't publish it. But I, I do receive a lot of calls, and I think that it's just a part of public service.
Sure.
And, and part of that is being able to direct people to the sources they need, especially during this time. It's one of the things that we've tried to do with the county initiatives, the state initiatives, the federal initiative, make sure that people have access to that information. And you'd really be amazed at how many people will call City Hall and not know who they need to talk to. So having this, this time, I, I think in some ways has been a blessing in being able to reconnect with people in a different way and to make sure that they know that we are working and still working as hard as we can on their behalf.
So I, I was just going to say, operational efficiency striking a balance, or it is a balancing act, whether pre-COVID or, or, or now. And even, you know, our deficit prior to me coming on to the council, it is a balancing act. If it comes to a consideration and or a conversation for eliminating employees, I, I, I would hope that not, would not happen. Because honestly, today I just lost my other job. And, you know, what, how that's going to look, you know, so many other people have. When I see a Zion public works truck driving up my street, I am so proud to see that you guys are working hard. So I, I definitely hope it doesn't come to that. And, and, and as a follow-up to the conversations you guys plan to have with department heads for situational awareness, I hope you guys would communicate with the, the other council members.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I was going to add, I think the other danger is, we've been going through budget gyrations, like you mentioned, for quite some time. And the other impact I think that it has is on the culture and the workforce within the city and whether or not they feel supported. And that, you know, we talked about keeping operations and services going to the citizens. If we aren't taking good care of our employees, then they aren't showing up well for the citizens either, so that's still a service failure. So I think when we look at this, it's not as simple as just, you know, a number. And that's something that we always have to take into consideration. And so it's not just a, a simple straightforward thing where you can be like, well, if I cut this and I get this number and everything is good, because every decision is going to cost and there's always going to be another impact. And I think to your point, it's up to us to sit back and look and see what is a good option and what's not. At this point, you know, I'm not in line with cutting any bodies. I mean, I think that there's probably a list of things that we can look at. And it's up to council at that point and working with the department heads and working with our attorney. So some of the things that I've heard, just as we've sat here and discussed this, is the tax anticipation warrants, not force outs but buyouts. I know that that's often been something that has come up when people are nearing that point. It's, it's been a savings, it's something where you can still treat people with dignity and respect and give them their fair due, but then also having a benefit back to the city. I think the other thing is, even though it's a small term, is reducing the overtime just as a good show of faith in terms of, you know, again, everything is a compromise. I think Administrator Nabel and I, we talked about extending the term to Walmart for the sales tax. That's potentially another hundred, couple hundred thousand that we could save in a budget year and extend that out. Open backup discussions with Advance. And then of course, we always have the Hail Marys of cannabis, the stranded act, and home rule. But I think a combination of those things could get us really close and not back to the point where we can flatten out the budget.
Well said, well said, Commissioner. Any other comments? Because right now, item number 10 would be departmental commentary. If anyone has any one else to add? Administrator Nabel?
You've heard enough from me tonight.
Never hear enough from you.
First of all, just to piggyback on what Commissioner Fryerson said, as far as, as far as the employee morale, I mean, that's, that's a big concern. Especially with the budget looming, every year, employees have to deal with the uncertainty because we have these issues. I wouldn't be getting through, I, this is my family here. I wouldn't be getting through this without, like, they're all my support structure and I vented to them at different points and-
Correct.
I'm sorry. But they are the best department head and they take on more for the city. You're skipping me now. They take on more for these citizens, and this goes all the way down, all the way down. Employees of Zion put in more than you could ever ask. We can't get to a point of sacrificing them with everything that they've put in. That's all I'll say on that. The, the other procedural item I'd like to address is, we do have a regularly scheduled meeting for next Tuesday. Obviously, I don't think we need to have that, but I would like to leave, so I'd like to cancel the, the first meeting in May, but leave the May 19th, the second meeting on the, on the books and determine if we need that going forward.
Could we use the May 7th date as a potential date for us to have our discussion, our virtual discussion then? If everyone would look at their calendars and see if that works? Yeah. Director Iason?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was just going to mention that the building applications forms can be found on the city website and they can be filled out, they can be emailed in, they can be dropped off, they can be mailed in. So that's another option instead of coming in person.
Director Roberts?
Sorry. I just went blank, I don't know.
Happens to me all the time.
Oh, I did want to announce, I, I have not confirmed this, but the, the vacuuming from the advance, the leaf program should have started today. And that will run for two weeks. They are also continuing to run the yardways pickup is, is going to, is being done also through November 30th. I know a lot of citizens have been calling us about that.
And the guidelines-
The only thing they suspend, sorry, sir, the only thing they suspended was bulk item pickup. And I believe tomorrow they will start doing that also.
Okay. And the guidelines for the leaf pickup are the same in terms of the leaves being on the parkways?
Yes, sir.
And not in, not in the gutters in the street?
Yes, sir.
Want to make sure that, it, it seems like a lot of people have, starting to catch on to that, but we, I think that's one of those constant reminders that we have to send to our citizens to have photos of the right way to have their leaves on the parkway so that the advanced disposal crews can clean up the leaves. Commissioners, any comments? Oh.
I'm there.
I'm sorry, Chief, Chief?
Yeah, I just wanted to, Commissioner Fryerson and I were talking about announcement for this. Unfortunately, it didn't come quite soon enough for us. But we'll be, we've created a street crimes unit that will be taking effect on May 11. Getting up to full staff has allowed us to do that. We are now putting about a quarter of our swarm personnel in investigations capacity. We've often talked about it's the 1% to 2% that are in our town or coming through our town to cause a problem. Every officer is important, but most of our patrol officers largely serve the 98% and their needs, whether it's at a traffic accident or taking a crime report. But we are trying to more intelligently assign our personnel to target them towards the 2%. Unfortunately, everybody knows we had a shooting early Sunday morning that resulted in a young lady losing her life. That's exactly why this unit was created, because we've seen that kind of violent crime that's been going on. Unfortunately, I mean, that was at 4:00 AM in the morning. I don't know how we're actually going to get a kind of 24/7 presence that will prevent those people from still doing what they want to do. But that's our goal and our aim. Along with shifting our personnel, a quarter of our personnel to target more than that 1% to 2%, that's allowing us to tap in more seized assets, so in a sense, we're creating the revenue line, revenue items on the police department side of things. We continually try to find other things that we can move from our budget into that drug prevention fund. We talked with David just this week, we, we are actually finally getting four of our five squads that we were with late last year. But rather than taking that out of some other general fund, we have to, we have to cash down for the purchase, for the financing of those cars, and we took $25,000 from that drug prevention fund. Being involved in the Lake County Special Investigations Unit is allowing us to access to both state and more importantly, federal seized funds, and the mayor knows this. Today, they started a search warrant in town that resulted in a significant arrest of heroin placement of ethanol and seizure of cash that involved an operation that was happening across multiple state lines, so. state lines, so. Like I would, I said, I wish this would, we would have this unit to prevent what happened this weekend, but our goal would be certainly to keep future, and so that shouldn't happen.
All right. Because we're running out of time on the tape, we have to cut the departmental commentary short and move to item number 11, which is moving. Chief Lewis can go, he just won't be on now.
No, I don't, it's not working. It's two hours, just quit.
All I want to say, if you want to ask.
John, can I have a video?
Well, that's up to these guys.
Otherwise.
I can just talk, it doesn't have to be on tape.
I just did two hours, John, so I don't know if you want me to put another one in for the last few, five minutes or something.
How fast can I go? How fast? How fast can I be on you?
I don't, I don't think it's necessary, because all we have is a full session.
Nobody wants to listen to John anyway.
I think everyone is pretty much, everyone pretty much said what they needed to say, so.
Except for Chief Lewis.
I don't have to be on tape. All I want to tell the council is, just so you know, you know, we're, we're holding our own with the COVID-19. You know, we're responding, as you can imagine, there's an uptick of breathing problems, don't feel well, but everybody we go on is suspected as COVID-19 until proven otherwise, you know? And it's been a great outpouring of support from the community with food being dropped off, this and that, and one thing we don't do is we won't accept cooked food. And we have in the past, but right now it's going to be catered food or buy it at the store, not homemade stuff. And as far as PPE goes, we're doing pretty good, we've got a good supply of PPE, we're getting it from the county.